Welcome, everybody, to February 21st. This is not an official meeting, but because we don't have a quorum, but we're going to record anyway for anybody that's interested in the topics that we're covering. And we may have some members of the public, and so we'll record that and call it good. So, very informal to anybody watching. The, yeah, so we'll do minutes approval and all that stuff would be at a future date. I won't be at the next two, however, I'd say, at least for the record, I didn't have any corrections. It was more just, well, I did, actually. Yeah, I guess I could just say it and have it here.
Well, yeah, we'll make sure that your thoughts on the minutes get brought up.
Yeah, it was more, so these are the minutes from February 7th. And let me just see this, I think. I think there was a comment on the, on page two of the minutes, in the third paragraph down, the last sentence, that says that I said in the rural area, the lots are larger, but in the village and residential area, the lots are not big, so a 1,500-square-foot unit would not be possible and still be in compliance. And, I mean, if those are the exact words I used, that's in the minutes, the meaning that I was trying to convey is not that they, that it would not be possible, but it might not likely be possible, just given lot sizes. I wasn't trying to be definitive about it.
So, "might not be possible" instead of "would not be possible."
Right, right. Since we're in the whole shall and should stage these days. And then, in the next paragraph, there's a reference to, that I pointed out, this is a way to solve some of the issues in the town plan. And I don't, I may have used the word "issues," but the, what I was going for is recommended actions. These are things that have been brought up for discussion through things like recommended actions, that the accessory solution that we were talking about might be a way to address some of those things. But, yeah, outside of that, I think that was, that was all I had. And since those will be reviewed at a future meeting, start with just chatting about the zoning modifications.
Do you want to go over Kate's memo?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. What, you know, I'm realizing, I noticed that there was, there were comments on the zoning, the zoning issue too, but I, I'm just realizing I never clicked on the attachment. Thought I, I thought I did, but I got busy with something else. Is that something we, we want to just wait for the full group to look at, or is it possible for you to sort of summarize what the issues were?
For the attachment that you're referring to?
Was, I think there was some, Dave Marshall provided some comments, and I, I just, I just didn't, didn't look.
I mean, I have the document that Dave Marshall provided, which I've emailed to everybody.
Yeah, and that's what I didn't.
Okay, well, that, I have that on the, I have that on the computer. I didn't print it, but he, his examples from New Hampshire mostly, those are the ones you're referring to, just want to make sure that you're talking about.
Oh, okay. I guess, yeah. I, or should we just wait to do that?
No, either way, part of, part of this, I think, is good, because I, I mostly, like, I really want to, well, to a view and your perspectives in working with towns and a lot of these issues, so I, I'm interested in talking about it anyway. It might be something that we'd want to cover with the bigger group anyway, later, but happy to talk about it now.
Yeah.
In the, the second, the second change discussion that Dave Marshall was more talking about, really got into things, my takeaway from that was, and thank you for including the jam golf decision and all of that background, that was an interesting read, I hadn't read that before.
Mm-hmm.
But he was really, the gist of it was, and you, you may have summarized it, that he's coming from an engineering perspective, which, you know, you want things to be finite and very defined, so he was requesting that there be sufficient definitions for some of these things. And in his opinion, the way, the way that we addressed the change effectively did not have a definition for steep slopes, which he thought could come back and create problems down the line. And so I think he was really looking for some definitive.
Yeah, I think he would prefer a number, you know, he may have a position himself about what he thinks the number should be, but in the end, he knows as an engineer, his job is to work with a number, and it's, it's easier to work with a number than with words that don't define a number.
Yeah.
You know, he, he would tell his client that he's designing something for, I did it this way because the number is X.
Right.
So, in, in Westford, we have, steep slopes are something that we protect, and we have, you can impact up to 1,000 square feet of, of steep slopes with conditional use on your site, site plan, and that's it. Because, you know, it, that may be the, the way you have to put in a driveway or, or whatever to access a site, but we keep it, you know, really, very limited, and, and it, you know, it, you know, people work to avoid, you know, creating those impacts as a result.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and the stuff that I quoted from Westford's regs, that 511 S14, that is the paragraph you're referring to, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's actually been pretty, pretty effective in striking that balance between, you know, a site that is challenging to, to develop, but not, but, but, but not taking away somebody's opportunities for, for doing that.
Yeah, I think the way that Westford does it is kind of interesting. I, I tried to give a range of approaches. I think it's Heinsberg that has this primary and secondary, so you, you know, you've got the greater ones, and you, you know those are the third rail, can't touch those, and then you have others that you can. But the way that Westford does it, I think, is certainly, you know, it's numerical, and it may be more constraining than some people would like, but you know, you know how much.
Well, it's, it's led to some good discussions, just in real life, a couple of examples where we've had engineers, it just makes them be very thoughtful about how they approach whatever it is they're trying to do. And, you know, what, there was one that said, okay, here we can, in order to avoid impacting 1,000, you know, we'll impact fewer than 1,000 square feet, but we'll be taking this kind of more circuitous route, and there are, you know, there's some other sensitive resources in the area. Alternatively, we could impact just slightly more than 1,000 square feet, and, but we would avoid endangering these other resources. And, and there was some wiggle room in the regulations that allowed the, the Development Review Board to, you know, kind of say, you know, this is the better way to go. But it, but it was a very thoughtful, was a good, it was a good outcome, given, you know, the circumstances, so.
Jason, do you want to give Jerry an insight as to what's going on here?
Yeah, so clearly, we don't have a quorum, so this is just.
We're just shooting the breeze.
Informal conversation, we're recording it, we're still going to follow the topics that are in here, just so that it's an open conversation, and people can hear what we're talking about, but.
The flu, the flu's going around.
Right, the flu claimed two of us, and it kind of threw things off the rails. So I imagine, were you poking in in general, just for the, like, the zoning discussion and then economic development, or more specifically for any one thing?
Well, the economic development item caught my eye, of course.
Okay.
But I was, I intended to be here for the, for the safety.
Ah.
Oh, they're down, they're downstairs, or they were.
Yeah, so, so I realized that I was going to have to cut short a few things to start, but with economic development, and just simply to be honest, more familiarity.
Yeah, absolutely.
With, you know, what you do, how you're doing it, and it's an extension of our exchange about what you might call just more collaborative.
Which I really valued that, I thought that was good, yeah. Certainly, well, since this is informal, just in the conversation, if you want to jump in at any point, feel free, because there's no formal decorum at this point.
I'm going to get Jerry to copy the materials.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll wait until Dean gets back, because there was something that I wanted to just talk through about slopes in general. But that's good to know that the way that that's been going in Westford has been.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's provoked a thoughtful approach to doing this, which is, which has been, you know, that's nine-tenths of the game right there.
Right, certainly. I, well, and I guess could, could catch Dean up anyway, the, one thing that has always stood out to me around slopes, and I know that, and just for context, at the, at the Select Board hearing, the, the, the zoning issue that did impact the property in question that had been called out around the Minier property, that originally, one of the thoughts was just to remove steep slope from the developable area concept, which would have alleviated their problem, not necessarily looking at it as an individual property, but from my view, and I'm speaking personally, I didn't understand the need to be restrictive specifically for a, a percentage of slope. To me, I would like to understand what would the reasons for not developing on a slope be? And the reasons might be erosion control, or any, or scenic views, or any number of things, but it just struck me as putting in a, a hard number that still doesn't necessarily account for those things. And specifically, and I'm glad you included this stuff from various towns, because Norwich talks about, they've got, there's regulations that limit construction on 25% slopes, and a subdivision regulation that limits areas with slopes of greater than 15%. And as far as steep slopes go specifically in their regs, it says that for excavation and filling in areas to be disturbed with slopes greater than 15%, an erosion control plan for the disturbed area must be submitted with the permit application. But then, anything in excess of 25% is not allowed, except for the installation of lines for utility, septic, and water services. And when I see that, what jumps out at me is, okay, well, so even if something is in excess of 25%, and utility, septic, or water services need to use it, I imagine there would still need to be an erosion control plan of some sort, which is not specifically listed here. And it just strikes me as, if the, if the purpose of not building on slope is to control erosion, or not want to impact particular scenic views of rolling hillsides and that sort of thing, then there should be a, like, an erosion control plan, or a, a plan that's going to handle those concerns, and that, that the specific steepness of the slope shouldn't be an issue. Like, from my perspective, if somebody wants to build a, build a house into the side of a, a vertical wall, as long as they're not doing something that's going to impact the area around it in a negative way, good for them. I mean, there are, and that's a very extreme example, but I think what I had used in previous meetings was the idea of, like, the, the earthship concept, or you could build a house into the side of a hill, and it's very efficient, and you can utilize the resources that are around you very well that way, but based on these rules, you could never do that here, if I'm understanding things correctly.
In these other towns, yeah, I'm not sure I want to speak for any of those, but.
But even if we say you can't build on anything greater than 15%, then.
Well, there, right now, we have to keep in mind two things. There's a 15%, there is a nu, there's a number when it comes to the calculation of development potential. That's the developable area concept. So, so there's one thing where slope comes up, it's when we're talking about how much development potential exists on a parcel, that. And then we have this reference to steep slopes in the PUDs, for which there is no number. So, that's, that's still the open question. What is the degree or amount of slope where you wouldn't want to say to somebody, no, that you can't put a building, because right now, it just says steep slope? And Dave Marshall was saying, oh, well, I read the regs, because you use 15% someplace else, I read the regs to say that it's 15% in this PUD section, and that's not what it says.
Right.
And we've had reference to steep slopes like that in the regs for a while, so, right now, there is no number that says how steep is steep for the purposes of telling somebody you can't build there. We've only got a percentage when it comes to this initial step of saying, how many houses could you put there? And we've had that for a while, and right now, we have a few more, we have several more lots that could be created because of the, the exemption for those 15 acres or less. Yeah, when I, when I searched for examples, I was really trying to just focus on the use of a number in regulations where communities were saying, either build or don't build, not to get at the first question, which is a separate one, which is, how much development can take place on the lot, not where can it occur?
Right, and I, I do get that those are separate issues, but when it comes to the point of whether or not you can build, and, and I respect that across all of these, it's, 15 and 25 are the two numbers that are generally used. And, and the, a decent application was to say if it's a primary view shed, for example, or a primary area based on whatever the various qualifiers were for that, and slopes is one of them, then 15% would be the limitation. If it's a secondary area, then it could be up to 25. Like, I get those concepts, but I still, even, even when I was reading all of these, I'm thinking, well, but what is it that you're trying to address?
Address, when you say steep slopes as a criterion in the PUD, yeah, yeah.
Because to me, it doesn't make sense. If you have a, if you have an architectural process that, I mean, you, you look at, and Stephen would probably correct me on this, but if you look at something like a Frank Lloyd Wright falling water kind of thing, that was built over a waterfall, like, you would never be able to do that in any of these towns, even if the architecture was something where it integrated with the environment, and it did not disrupt it in that way. And that might be a bad example, maybe it does screw with nature, but.
Yeah, I, I think one of the challenges is understanding how a numerical restriction applies both at an individual lot level, and then at a district level, and townwide, because in isolation, a single house on a slope of 40%, properly engineered, may be no big deal.
Right.
And some of the places that have had these kinds of regulations for a while, it's been more of a concern of the number of homes on steep slopes, when the homes are in large number, and we have to worry about subsidence, and maybe where geologically, or the soils don't have the bearing capacity that some of our soils have, but all, some of our soils don't have good bearing capacity either. The original design for Harrington House had to be changed substantially because of the soils and the slippage that could be, so those issues do arise here, but it's, it's a lot tougher to say this doesn't make sense when you're talking about a single house, than if you were imagining a hillside, and you were thinking, ooh, 30 houses built on that slope, that's too many.
Right, no, of course, and that gets into the scenic things, and there are, I mean, there are reasons why that would not make sense, and it would run afoul of the, the intention. I, I just, one of the things that I've seen, just in going through a lot of regulations and that sort of thing, is it strikes me that sometimes rules are put in place that don't necess, they're put in place to address certain issues, but then you get hung up on the rule, and you lose sight of what the issues were that you were trying to address. So we could get to a point where, sure, yeah, you can build, it's under 15%, go nuts, but there might be erosion problems on a hill that's at 14%. Like, you, you could create massive stormwater issues if you're doing something that's technically within the rules, but it's creating problems, because you're not addressing the core thing that you're going after in the first place. And I, and I guess it's that kind of conversation that I was hoping could somehow be involved here, because I, I, I don't like the idea of setting a firm definition, for the sake of setting a firm definition. I like the idea of having some leeway to be able, to be able to interpret, say, an erosion control plan, or a land management plan for a PUD kind of thing. And that is where some subjectivity should be allowed to happen, because on the whole, you ordinarily would not want to build on, say, this slope, or with this criteria, but in this case, the way that you've engineered it, this makes sense, it fits into the landscape, it would be a benefit, this is something that we should encourage. I just didn't want to be over-limiting, if we didn't.
Yeah, and, and there's no saying that David, David Marshall, or people like David Marshall's desire for a, a number will need to carry the day.
Right, right.
It's just that a number is easier than something that is not a number, something qualitative, and it's even, it's certainly more, it's easier to administer than something performance-based or certification-based, because our regulations do have things that rely on an engineer's certifications. If you take the view, we're not going to say, we're not going to set a number for slope, we're going to say instead, if it won't cause, you know, as long as an engineer certifies that it won't cause undue erosion, or something like that, or that it's in their professional opinion necessary to do something a certain way. You know, on the surface, that sounds good, right?
Oh, there can be problems with that as well, and I get it, yeah.
But, but you do find that it's hard to argue against the person saying, well, I, I certify it, and, you know, then you get into dueling experts, or, even if the town is going to go to the trouble of getting an expert who's going to question an, an expert for an application, so that can push things in the other direction, towards a number, or to something that's not relying on a certification.
And, and all of this may be, and I completely recognize, it may be that just from a general town planning perspective, it's just easier to, in this case, to have a number, and to say, well, because on the whole, it makes more sense to not develop on slopes that do this thing, because technology and methods aren't there yet. And I can respect that, too. It's just, to, to, it always, whenever we were dealing with hard numbers around slope, it always, that's what came to mind, was, well, is this an actual limitation, or is this something that we're putting on ourselves, because it's easier in a broad-based?
Well, right now, again, it would only be a major, what the majority of members of a DRB would say, that's steep.
Right.
Is, is what, will say you can't put houses there, as part of a PUD review.
Which I'm, I personally am good with, but, yeah, I get it. I, I think it was more just having seen the perspective of what other towns have done, that to me, it seems, in most cases, fairly limiting.
Yeah. Kate, how long has Westford had its approach, the way it's, it's done things for?
Well, we, we actually modified it maybe about a year or two ago, just to make it a little, it, it was very cut and dry before. It was a very, you know, and, and that was, what was happening was, in order to meet that regulation, we had people maybe creating other undesirable impacts, you know, like an incredibly long driveway, you know, which, you know, once it has to meet all the fire truck, you know, standards and all of that, actually ends up causing a more, you know, it was one of those, like, hmm, it's not quite what we were, you know, had in mind when, in terms of the outcome of the regulation. So we decided to make it a little more flexible, so that, you know, you could have a conversation about, like, okay, on this specific site, what is the most important thing in this context to try and protect? You know, this is a lot that is, the intention is to develop it. You know, unless the town is willing to buy the land, it can't prevent somebody from developing it. So how do we shape the development in a way that yields, you know, the best kind of outcome, in terms of what that means for us? So that's protecting water resources, protecting habitats, protect, you know, trying to minimize disruptions to steep slopes and ledge out crobbings. Those are the, the big things that the town decided was the most important. So, and, you know, maybe, maybe a straighter approach is the best way to do that, even if it ends up, you know, kind of impacting a bit more of the steep slopes. So that, that number was given a little bit of flexibility. You know, because we realize that, you know, if you're really going for trying to reduce erosion, because we're all unpaved roads, so it's like a huge issue for us, if you're really trying to reduce erosion, then incentivizing people to put in these super-long driveways all over the place, because nobody ever wants to share a driveway. We, we've toyed with trying to make that mandatory, but just, they weren't having it. They want their own really long driveway, and, you know, to their lot thing. So, so, so if, if, in order to protect some steep slopes, we were incentivizing something that maybe had to be a couple hundred feet longer, then that was maybe not the best.
Yeah, and to, to me, again, though, it comes back to, what is it that you're trying to mitigate? I mean, because clearly, any kind of development is having an impact on land on which it's being developed.
Right, right.
So, it's, it's not about preventing anything outright necessarily, but you do want to mitigate any potential issues that could arise from that development. And so, to me, it's, well, what is that focus? And if it is things like erosion, or habitat, or whatever it may be, then really identifying what are those things, and giving clear enough, a clear enough understanding around those things, that a group that handles those subjective decisions, such as a DRB, could then have a framework in which they could operate.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, the regulations could be written to consult X, Y, and Z, you know, maps that these guys have.
Right.
To kind of determine, on this site, in this particular area, these are the, these are the sort of things that are really important, or these are the vulnerabilities, or whatever. You know, you can, can do a more site-specific, take a more site-specific approach, so that it doesn't have to be kind of a one-size-fits-all thing.
Right. Good, well, thanks. And Gail, clearly informal, because we're not quorum, but.
Do you need this? Do I need to?
Yeah, we are just recording this for information.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, we already have in the plan, right, that development should be very site-specific, in turn, and so I think that the suggestions that you're making make a lot of sense. That the DRB should be approaching, I don't remember the exact language, and I don't have the plan in front of me, but should be approaching the development proposals with a site-specific knowledge of what is present on the site, and creating the, the permit in such a way that it respects those resources.
Which brings up another thing, that came up at the Select Board hearing, or maybe it was in the email thread, that there's, there's also an intention to not overburden any particular group like DRB, so, and that's where I think having a framework that's defined enough, but also provides enough leeway for unique circumstances, so that you're not creating an environment that you can't do certain things necessarily. You could do them, but you need to make sure that they're planned well and fit within that rough framework. And I also will fully acknowledge that I know none of this is just easy and straightforward, it's just, these are, these are things that occurred to me as I was going through all the slope-specific language.
It just was going to say that, as a result of the change to PUDs, the development, the subdivisions in the rural district will start with that pre-hearing conversation that's focused on resources first. So, to Gail's point about having things evolve from the resources, that's already, that's been addressed. You had it in place before for subdivisions of six lots or more, but now that will apply to the smaller ones, which have under, in the past, not had to begin their review process that way. Someone could just say, I'm going to split them this way. But as a result of the PUD change, they start the process by looking at the resources. And if the most important resource is some habitat for X, then that will be shown on the map. If the most important resource or sensitivity had to do with slope, then that should come out at that very first meeting.
Right, okay. Well, that's encouraging.
I just want to say that I, I think that. There needs to be a certain amount of specificity, because I've been to too many DRB meetings where we present our comments, and then the comments are ignored, because it's not specific enough in the regulations. And so somehow or another, there needs to be a balance. I mean, it happened again last night. I mean, it happened again last night at the DRB meeting about the, the water quality at Monroe Brook, when we were talking about the AutoMaster permit. And it, it just wasn't part of the discussion. And I brought it up, but it, it wasn't in the regulations and it wasn't specific enough, so it went by the way.
And, and those are exactly the kinds of things that I think the, I mean, the Planning Commission, now that we have the plan with the, all of the recommended actions that came out through all of that discussion, is to provide that framework, to really make sure that, and I think we have that language in there, and it may be review the bylaws and make sure that this is supported, but to make sure that if you're within a particular range of a, of a river, an impaired watershed, there are additional constraints and considerations. Yeah, any, well, I mean, I just mostly wanted to get out that thought and hear comments and that, so that was good from my view. Are there any other thoughts or comments around it? And I don't know where this is going to end up going, it just, it was interesting to see how different towns do this. And if I'm thinking about this from a, say, a Dave Marshall perspective, or even my own perspective, I could see holes in several of these that people could argue to say, oh, well, all right, if you want to get technical. And, and I think that's what's bugged me with some of the issues that we've, that we've worked with, and even in looking at the JAMGOLF decision and what was being appealed. And these situations get into legal technicalities that really do come down to definitions and the way the statute is, is written. But to me, if you look at something like the plan, and I think I referenced this in my first years, the plan is the guiding document that provides the spirit of all of these regulations. And to me, if the plan, if the intention of the plan is clearly there, that should be taken into a strong consideration around interpretation of a regulation if there's a gray area. And I don't think that that happens as often as it should.
It was specifically addressed last night at the DRB meeting when somebody mentioned something that, that was in the plan, and the engineer said, well, the plan doesn't count. The plan is not a regulatory document. The plan is only the vision. And the board said, mm-hmm.
Well, unless, isn't it in the JAMGOLF decision where they had South Burlington wrote their plan?
You can.
Has backup into their.
You can use a plan as part of a regulatory scheme, but the question comes down to, is the language in the plan that is used in the regulatory scheme specific enough and clear, clear enough and mandatory so that it will have regulatory effect? So if regulations refer to the plan, and the plan has a lot of shoulds, this should, that should, we'd like it if, then that's not a way for the plan to have regulatory effect. And that's some of the source of the frustration of the Natural Resources Committee has been historically, because they understand the spirit and want for that to translate into regulatory effect. And the court cases don't, don't rule that way. And in fact, the court, I mean, there, there is a lot of confusion. I mean, it's very confusing when you look at all of the Vermont cases that decide whether or not language in a plan has regulatory effect, because it's, it's almost impossible to make rhyme or reason of it. It really is.
Yeah, and, and I get it. I don't want my words to be misconstrued. I don't believe that the plan is a regulatory document, nor should it be. For me, it's more that the, the plan is a guiding document, and therefore it sets the tone, and it creates the spirit in which these regulations should be created. So to me, it should have some kind of an influence if there needs to be, if there's any gray area that needs interpretation. I mean, and I understand legally the difference between should and shall. But as you were saying, that what popped into my mind is you, you could say, well, you, you shouldn't plow in your neighbor. And you should not plow in your neighbor. Like, if, if that happened to be a regulation and somebody, somebody consistently plowed in their neighbor, and that neighbor said, all right, well, I'm going to raise this as an issue and say, this document says that you shouldn't plow in your neighbor, and this guy keeps plowing me in. And they say, well, because the language says you should not, it doesn't say that I shall not, so legally, I'm fine to plow you in. But if that guiding document says you should not, that is the intention saying, this would not be an ideal thing to do. And that, that should then give that some kind of a weight in a way that would be helpful. Maybe a horrible example, but.
No, I don't know that it's a bad example at all, because there's at least one of the decisions, it was a conference, maybe you were at at a VPA, it was in Randolph a couple of years ago. Dave, it was done in the, kind of the form of a game show, Dave Roux, you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
There is at least one instance where a judge found a should statement having regulatory effect. So it's, it's not, it's not absolute, this should-show thing, but it's, it's certainly more.
You're easier, better covered if you use show, right?
And I think it's also context-dependent if we were talking about plowing in your neighbor, given the context. The judge might very well say, yeah, don't do that. But the kinds of things that we're deciding with zoning regulations, the, the guiding decision is JAMGOLF, and specificity is called for, clarity is called for. You know, the thing that Dave Marshall said about how an applicant should have an understanding of what it will take, what they need to furnish for the DRB to decide their application and rule in their favor, that, that should be known. It should not be unfathomable.
Right.
So we do, we should aspire, the regs should aspire to clarity.
Yeah, I think it's, for me, what I'm hung up on is that it's about finding that balance, because you can, you can end up making it just so black and white rigid that you lose any ability to be creative or be innovative. And, and so I, like, I always like to see a balance where you're not, I mean, there are some cases where you need to be very rigid and you have to know exactly what's going on, like NASA-level type, type things, like you need that. But there's other areas where you want to create enough wiggle room to enable innovation and creativity to flourish, and, I mean, that's how we grow. Not that I have an answer for it, it's just, that's a theme that keeps popping up.
What do you want to go next?
Yeah, so the next one was, well, the, the plan in economic development?
Yeah.
It was a great series of articles by Gwendolyn Hallsmith.
Yeah, the Economic Development Planning Series, yeah. Maybe just talking about the plan generally, if, if we wanted to just address that before jumping into economic development, and the approval of the plan, and congratulations.
Oh, yeah.
And I just wanted to say that it's my intention to make sure that Maya gets her final payment, because there are no more edits to make. We should be having some conversations at some point. With the budget proposal has, that will go to the Voters at Town Meeting, has some money in it, the hope of which is that it will go towards publication of some copies. I'm hoping that, you know, a lot of people use it digitally, but I think we will want to do a run, so keep that in mind. Also keep in mind that, you know, some, at some point, there could be some cleanup. But I am intending to make sure that Maya gets her, gets her final installment. Unless it was anything that somebody said, oh, you know, what about this non-substantive part of the plan document?
Yeah, not from a design perspective, but as far as that goes in any printing and that sort of thing, I know we had talked about a couple of more technicality-type things that we wanted to clean up as part of potentially an amendments package. And I like the suggestion of just setting a date in the future and working towards that. That might also allow a little bit of wiggle room should any other issues come up as the plan soaks in.
Yeah, I think that if it's, if it's explicitly stated, you know now, I can keep reminding you, just as we did with the plan update, this was the schedule.
Right, right.
This is where you are on the schedule.
But if we were to do something like that, would a, I mean, would, I guess my question is, would we want to wait until after we've done something like that for a print run?
You might very well want to. I mean, that's a way to, I think it creates some incentive to get that cleanup done.
Right. Okay. So not that we're voting on any of this stuff, but there's an idea. And thanks to the select.
But back to Gwendolyn Hallsmith, yeah, I thought it was a good series, and I had thought about sending it to you before, but did not do it, and wanted to get it in your pockets this time.
Yeah, and also the, that economic report that was done, was that 2014?
That, well, there were a couple of things, so are you referring to the pages from the Route 7 Charette project, AIA, or the one that was by Doug Kennedy? There was one from 2014, so you're probably referring to that one if you said 2014.
I think so, that's the one that starts with specific opportunities.
Okay, so that's actually from Vision for Seven, so that goes back earlier.
Got it.
Yeah, that, that was, I wish I could remember her name. One of the people on the AIA team whose specialty was economic development, she was from Wisconsin. I'm not going to remember her name.
Yeah, can't remember either.
But she had a big hand in this part of it.
Yeah.
Because just some good content in there that, and in looking at this, it made me feel good, because a lot of the ideas in here were reflected in some of the recommended actions that we ended up with in the plan, so at least we're consistent. And then formally, the, the select board is taking this up in mid-March, sounded like? Which is great.
Can I use this one?
Sure.
You tell me if I'm not being heard.
You can.
Now I know how uncomfortable everybody is when we have to say to you. I think maybe the most, maybe the most intelligible start is to say that we have very healthy challenges in a number of areas. Energy conservation, municipal utility, traffic safety, bike and pet safety, and economic development among them. And none of these admit easily to a committee, or even a body as we currently define them. And yet all of them have cross-cutting significance that is, that is more than important for our future. So the opening question is, how, what is the most efficient way for us to address those needs? Do we fit them to existing structure, which now also includes town departments? Or do we recognize that these admit to their own cross-cutting structure, which may, may require a different form, a different manner of doing business and such? At points in time, the board has established pro-tem committees. It's established advisory bodies like the, like the Stormwater, you may recall. We have several groups that are in the form of study groups, independent. So the opportunity, I think, that, that we'll address on March 12th as a start to our new year, is form following function, how best to address these cross-cutting issues. We've made some attempt in budget to do that. Perhaps the most instructive cross-cutting issue is central procurement. All departments, all town operations buy X. And at the moment, through no one's fault, and at no, no, at no cause for complaint, most departments buy them independently of the others. There may or may not be economy in, in centralizing the purchase of paper. That's, but it remains to be seen. There may well be economy, however, in energy conservation, by having an independent effort of departmental departments, inasmuch as they're all affected and they contribute to it. So the first, I think the first stage of our discussion is going to be identifying these challenges that, that require a form perhaps of their own and of our own device. And that may even run to, in one direction, a way to establish even closer working relationships among committees and commissions and boards. As, not as a, as a, as an added thought, but as a working, as a working matter. The second thing to say is that economic development, we are all aware, encompasses a great amount of activity. Some of it dependent upon your size and economic significance, some of it dependent upon whether you can afford or, or would be willing to discuss affording staff, some of it depending upon targets of opportunity versus general broad, broad-based effort and such. For some time, several of us on the board have been discussing economic development as an issue that needs elevation to, to this level of, call it, challenge for the moment. Whether it takes the form of a committee is now another question that I've just kind of discussed altogether with, with these others. So for the moment, I'm not sure how my colleagues will come out on that. But it's clearly a challenge that we need to address. And in our exchange, I even identified things like revenue, alternative revenues development, which as you know, was one of my favorite reads in the plan, in terms of rec. So how much do you gather under the rubric economic development? Or do you break off some larger pieces like revitalization of the Route 7 corridor, of some study of regulatory effect, and whether there needs to be changed to, to enhance business location? Do you have serious discussions of potentially creating funds as incentives to businesses and, and business persons locating here? Do we have sufficient information about what, what, what are the, the most valuable things the town could do to enhance the creative economy on which we're increasingly based and which is increasingly populous of here? Excuse me. Oh, so the second thing that can be said is, while we all agree it's an important subject, there's, there's, there's a lot of subject.
Absolutely.
And I think the first questions we're going to probably ask is, how do we address that potpourri? And are there pieces that we feel are either critically important to us, or, or more easier to break off and deal with substantively? Or do we approach this as a whole and kind of an EDA-type? As you know, we're not, we're not privileged in a lot of funding because of our economic situation. And I think it would be maybe even mistaken to try to adopt a type of federally funded or, or state-funded EDA-type activity, for which, A, I'm not sure we'd be qualified, and B, whether it would actually apply. Way on the other end, I'm not sure that simply promotion is going to be our most effective In between all of this, I've had personal experiences with what might be called a squadron of experts who are reliable and on-demand to address any type of opportune inquiry or interest on the part of any business or any economic organization which, which expresses interest in locating here. It's a, it's a capacity we do not have in town staff, which is not in any way to minimize the outstanding capabilities of Dean and Lee. We just don't have on hand a staff that can pick up that morning, gather three people, and go sit with coffee with a potential developer, and answer questions, maybe advocate, maybe advocate, steward, whatever, whatever. So I'm not sure, once we've, once we've. So I'm not sure, once we've, once we've identified all these potential activities, I'm not sure what my colleagues will think is the, is, are those in which we should focus most and focus now. So this is a way of introducing them and starting the discussion. I think the strengths, the greatest appeal personally, I think, might well be the Route Seven revitalization and alternative revenues. To me, those seem to be perhaps, they, they seem to have the, the most emphasis in, in, in our discussions to this point.
Jerry, what do you mean specifically by alternative revenues?
Sales tax, fees, municipal utility, you recall, is based on, not, on a fee-based service, which is also arguably more equitable. But the heart of it is to establish a source of revenue aside tax, routine taxation. And I think the town probably should, in its own interest, and I'm very aware that there will be many people who are very disturbed at even the idea. But the town should begin to seriously consider a sales tax. It should consider perhaps creating funds of its own that could be used to incentivize development, low-cost loans. We have resources that maybe we should be exercising and one of those resources is a, a capital asset. I don't think there's any question about that. Another is the expertise that comes from business ownership and development that we have among all of our neighbors who in a, in a minute could show up in the morning and assist and help, who, who could be recruited to do that on a routine, regular basis. So we have our own resources that we could, that we could maximize in, in this whole process. So when you say economic development, I think our first task, like energy conservation, this will be repeated with that. It'll be repeated with traffic safety. It'll be repeated with all of these crosscutters. But, but in economic development, I think our first task is going to be to, to get our hands around the whole, decide which of it applies most directly to us, what our need is most, most emphatically. Incorporate the, the ideas in the plan. Perhaps seek as an initial, as an initial step, a small body of interested folks to sit and talk about it, you know, over coffee around a table, develop some ideas and not, and not necessarily feel obligated to create a form then and there. Which means maybe an economic development committee is not the first thing we should be discussing or talking about.
Multi-pronged for sure.
And all of that is, in a, in a short period of time, on March 12th. But that's the idea, March 12th. And I think of all the crosscutters, economic development and energy conservation are two that are right, right on the cusp. I mean...
I, I would agree. And for, for context, at least coming from the Planning Commission and Kate and Dean, feel free to correct me, but at least where I was coming from with, with pushing for an economic development discussion was when we started focusing on the Route Seven corridor and getting into discussions around, well, if we're going to start tweaking these things because we haven't gotten a, a flood of response from new projects, what could we do that could encourage those things? And that led to a discussion of potentially having nodes around particular areas that might have a bit, have more, more flexibility to be able to do things that might attract people in a different way. And that came back to, well, where would we put these nodes and for what reason? And in one case, it could be, well, we'll go there. There are, there are properties around that have been vacant for quite some time. So from my perspective, it's, well, all right, we know we want to develop this corridor. We know that we have these properties that have been vacant. Does anybody have an idea of what those property owners are looking for? Because it could just be that what we're creating is an environment that's not conducive to what they would be willing to sell to or it wouldn't support what they're willing to sell to. And just having that general inventory, and it's not to pin anybody down and say that, well, they would only put a hotel there or a restaurant or an apartment complex. But like, if you're willing to share, what are the types of projects that you would be open to? And their reasoning for that could be anything. It could be altruistic. It could be community support. It could be, I will only do this because that would, that's what has the highest rate of return on it. Whatever the reason, understanding those, I think, would be helpful in order to be able to say, okay, well, if this property owner in this area is interested in these types of concepts, we could formulate a node around that. And that might start with talking with some of the other stakeholders in the area, like local residents, other business owners, and just, well, what are you all open to? And see where those conversations go. It's not to say that we have to go down a specific path, but a favorite phrase of clients that I've had is, we don't know what we don't know. And usually that drives me insane because it's a very applicable thing to say. It's, it does happen. It is a truth in a lot of cases.
See, I mean, I think you make a really, a really important distinction, Jason, that I'd be happy if we were able to communicate that as well as you have between enabling development and promoting the product. So much of economic development is promotional largely because of the scale in most places. But in, in, in some of the original senses, some of which experience I had, economic development was community development and was, was aligned with schools, educational progress. I mean, there were a lot of things going on in economic development that, that were community-based and community-defined. And I think as a, as a matured, developed community, which we are, we're in a greenfield here. I mean, we have a fixed, you know, built environment. We have a fixed, you know, set of very progressive attitudes. I mean, we have, we are what we are. And the question is, and we have a wonderful professional business group. So the question is, would you, for instance, spend a proportionate amount of your time on promotional activity? Or would you spend it on kind of carefully researched, enabling devices like a potential change in regulation or a potential change in approach? Or a potential change in who helps you through the process? Or a potential change in, in actually recruiting interest? Targeting at one point a year ago, Dean helped me with that phrase. And I think that's a distinction that's among those we need to make and talk about because conventional economic development means a whole lot. This case first, I mean, it's a table full. And I'd hate to see personally the initiative kind of fail itself because you were trying to, you were trying to develop, you know, you're trying to deal with an elephant in a room with a, with a pigeon. I mean, you can't, you know. So what's our best use of our resources to, to, to improve what situation which seems to create what obstacles or indifference to the kinds of economic development we'd like to see, given this is what we'd like to see? And to me, at the moment, the, the, the plan is, is, is a measure of what we'd like to see. Yes, you could do a townwide survey and maybe somewhere down the road, that might be useful. But I think our starting point could be the plan and anecdotal conversations we all have that we could share around a table. Some, some, some definition of how we want to carve up economic development large into manageable pieces, given our needs, and then what form should that take? And I, it just seems to me, and as we've, Jason and I have been exchanging some views, it just seems that the collaboration among our committees and, and boards, commissions, the whole, the whole of us is a really obvious place to start.
Certainly.
So when I saw your, your note, I thought, you know, I'm on my way. Thankfully Duke played last night. So I'm on my way, but that's the short of it. Now, we have some side issues of just, what should the structures be? There may be a future.
There's a lot to talk about, for sure.
Should there be departments of the town the way they are now? Are there too much silo? Is there too, you know? In, in contemporary thinking, are we, should we be focused on issues and, and cross-cutting and not subject matter and, and, you know, so on, so forth?
And that, that applies inwardly as well, where I was going, because the, like, you... Well, the whole, we don't know what we don't know thing, the, to close that, the reason that that used to annoy me is because there were people that did know. They just weren't being asked or, or engaged. And in this particular example, it's, it's not that the situation aggravates me. That was a different world. But it's, it's more that, well, we do have properties that have sat vacant for quite some time. Those properties have owners. Those owners have thoughts. And those owners might not need to think about it because they're economically fine and it's just something that they own. But perhaps if they are engaged with certain ideas or we could get some feedback from them, that's a starting point for a conversation. Instead of what it felt like we were about to embark on was to come up with this brilliant plan for the Route Seven corridor and what could just be an amazing thing. And then you end up with one property owner that refuses to go along with it because that's not aligned with them at all and they torpedo the whole thing. Or a neighborhood group that, that speaks up. And I, I feel like that there's a, a better way to engage the process to ensure that the stakeholders understand what's going on and have an opportunity to contribute, which realistically, the whole Route Seven corridor, Charette discussions and that whole process was an open discussion to invite all of that in. This would just be taking it a next step further to specifically target the stakeholders in the specific areas that we have these ideas that could be developed into nodes or contribute to the town in a greater way.
Stakeholder interests are something else that we've been taking initiatives with. I started visits with major players. That's a, I don't mean that in a, in an exclusive sense, but major organizations in the town. We're making our way kind of around. And here are some of the things that you learn. The museum has a budget and payroll that's a magnitude larger than ours as the town. And Tom and his staff are very amenable to the ideas of what might be associated development to museum activities. Now, now I'm talking just for Jerry, not for Tom, but suppose someone was a conservator who increasingly, because of the computer basis of that work, is working off-site. Might there be an opportunity, if, at least for the point of a, of a letter to the conservator organization or to some of the major museums in the city, for instance, to solicit interest potentially in relocating here with the help of, of a user, just offhand? We sat with the farms. There turned out to be what appeared to be minor and yet in translation are major changes that would, they felt would benefit them in visitation. And this was a matter of a Green Mountain Transit, making a stop at the gate. So people who were unable to, to, to walk, you know, to visit would have transportation. It's simple.
Yeah.
No one said no, but no one listened. And so there are two cases, two instances from some of the, and this is an ongoing thing, a meeting with the churches. And it had to do, it started with the impervious surface, which was a major issue in the municipal utility, you may remember. And whether that was a fair, a fair application of fee to those, to those nonprofit organizations who also had extensive expansive impervious surface, parking lots and such and such. So in a sense, there's economic, there's, there's chance for economic development everywhere. This, and I, and please understand, I'm not promoting Article Eight on the Town War. Please understand that. That's the fire rescue. But one of the interesting things about the fire rescue proposal is that it's a public-private partnership in everything, including name. We are going to share with a private business the activity and costs of permitting and otherwise doing self-development on a project. Not because we were thrown together, not because we had to, but because each elected to in an area that we're talking about revitalizing. I mean, in a way, it's example, it seems to me personally, of what we perhaps would like to see absent the town can't be necessarily building facilities up and down Route Seven. I understand that. But this is a, I think this will, personal view, should this be approved? I think it has every chance of succeeding as a public-private partnership, among many other accomplishments. And, and I'm going to be very interested in that outcome. If the site's suitable, that's great, you know, blah, blah, blah. But if it's, if it's, if it's example of what you might do as a town, short of buying and developing, but maybe you could partner in other ways. And, and we, we refer to it as an example of what we can do. I think there's a long-term benefit there. So just all around us are, are all of these things floating, kind of looking maybe for a home. And that has brought me, you know, again, back to the idea of, let's gather them up. Let's come to some, some conclusion this spring as to what's the best way to start out and, and get going.
Totally agree. And even tying into things like energy conservation, I mean, there's the conservation aspect, but from a, a generation perspective, the idea of a community solar project that could end up with a return as well, in addition to leading by example and doing a lot of things.
I mean, in the end, energy conservation is hard to disassociate from economic development. And, and so is revenue enhancement. I mean, it's all finally of a world. But, and I don't think we're being, I don't think we're, we're crippled by, by, by not having cross-cutting mechanisms. That's not my point. I just don't think maybe we've, we've, we've maximized our resource in human resource and, and our, and our, our wherewithal by not, by not encouraging this, this, these cross-cutting efforts. And in the case of energy conservation, central purchasing, municipal utility, traffic safety, I mean, you've got a handful of them just right off the bat. And I'm convinced personally that we would, we would best address them, make the most of our resources by, by identifying them as initiatives. And then the question's going to be, what's the, what's the most appropriate form?
To some years, Jerry, energy conservation means something that I'm not sure is, was exactly, or is exactly the same thing Jason's referring to. So I want to make sure that we are in fact talking about this.
Well, my, my example is around generation with the, with the community solar type thing. But the conservation is...
Resource conservation, it's altered at energy forms. I mean, we're in a, we're in an environment of being able to address all of that. So we're, and we're our, we're our own best example. We're just absolutely our own best example. So are we, in our practice, in our municipal practice, are we, and are we resource protective? That's, is a question that should be asked outside of budget. And it can't be necessarily addressed just in budget. I mean, are we, are we efficient users of energy as it stands? Nobody knows. I'm not faulting.
Right, it's observation, right?
We've talked about this.
Yeah.
Nobody really knows. You know, do we, do we cut back on meetings and... You know, do we, do we cut back on meetings in, that require a lot of heat? Do we cut back on meetings that require a lot of cooling? I mean, no one has, there's a lot of seat at the pants, understanding, but there's no, there's no reliable record of, of what might, might result there. And so again, you've got a very broad-based, uh, uh, subject. What should, the same conversation, what should the initiatives be? Should it focus on solar? Should it focus on carbon print? I mean.
And then it's, it is, it's the cost benefit and weighing of priorities, cause I can say from the Energy Subcommittee, in those discussions, when just talking about the conservation aspects of things, there was a strong feel for, well, it would behoove the town to lead by example. I mean, for one, it would be the right thing to do anyway, but there is a lot of savings that could be generated just by being more efficient.
Yeah, sure.
On the conservation side.
Yeah.
Which doesn't, which what?
Same's true with resources and the way we treat our lands that belong to the town and that sort of thing.
It's a starting point.
Yeah.
What are we doing with our own properties? And that involves.
And our roads.
Yeah, and, but that involves rec. I mean, in a way, we're, in a way, we're trying to repeat the, the omnibus nature of the plan in manageable pieces that, that ultimately take some kind of budget expression and that are, that are, that are out of necessity, things that we should be doing as a select board in terms of policy determination. And I think we can all agree, the circle keeps turning, we keep meeting ourselves, you know, our own, you know, like, we've met the enemy, it's us kind of thing, but. So that's my, was my, that's my kind of sense at the moment about what we're going to try to introduce next, next, our first meeting. With the, and how far we'll get, it depends on my colleagues and what they think, and, but I think we're going to probably devote quite a bit of, of time to that. So when I saw this notation, I thought, oh, boy, you know, it's just.
Yeah, it's, it's great, it's encouraging to me to see that there, I mean, it's part of the conversation now, which is, which is great. And, and I'm also really encouraged that by the time I'm back in early April, you'll have it all figured out and good to go, it's just problem solved.
We'll have it boiled down to three paragraphs that, you know.
That's right.
Aren't you an optimist?
I think, I think one of the practical outcomes to hope for is the budget, next, the twenty, twenty-one budget, where we've made progress to boot over the last several years. And you might have heard me say, rather than just doing an incremental budget, everybody gets three point two percent, and everything that's in place stays in place, which is, you've also heard me say, it's not budgeting, it's just rewarding. And, and we've made, I think, a substantial amount of progress in allocating funds to their greatest need, which crosses departmental lines and crosses functional lines. But that's a lot of ship to turn, for good reasons, not for any, any, any objection on anybody's part. That takes time. But these crosscutters could take their own budget form and, and pull pieces from various departments easily enough. That's another potential outcome that we could, we could plan on and hope for by September, so that we'd have enough definition by September to be able to go through budget next year and have the topic energy conservation, whether a department or not. What are we doing? What's the list of activities? Where should the most dollars, you know? And, and how does energy conservation compete with economic development as a need? That, that's a, that's a outcome we control, that we could really definitely do. And so I'm going to suggest that to my colleagues.
It also seems to me that it's under our control to decide if those two things are in opposition, or if those are things that can be, work, you know, to mutual benefit.
I think we'd benefit, but the complementarity would, would emerge just by having chosen energy conservation versus, let's cut heating costs in the new library, or let's cut down idling time in the cruisers as a practice. Or let's cut down on the, on the number of, of meetings on any night where the temperature is, you know, below, below fifteen degrees. I mean, that, that's, I think, the very opportunity we'd have to, to gather all together, energy conservation, uh, possible activities. And, and your further question might be, how do we weigh energy conservation with economic development? Having that discussion is going to be a long way, will take us a very long way, because that's going to be a lot better discussion than should it be public works money, or should it be, you know, finance office money? I'm just using crazy examples, where you, we're not going to have that conversation eventually. And that would admit to a lot of public involvement, to a lot of CBC involvement. There's no reason why you couldn't be involved in some of those budget discussions right at the start. Doesn't have to wait until, you know, we do hearings at the end. And I think, Kate, the chance of, of smarter allocations of scarce resources will, are, are increased greatly by focusing on the crosscutters. Some of the functions are established and stable, like town clerk and finance, they're, I mean, talking now in budget terms, some of them are simply fixed. You, you pay interest, you, you know, you have a treasury function, you have a planning function, so on and so forth. But a good deal of the budget, interestingly, admits to these kinds of initiatives. Just idling, idling cruisers. You know, tire pressures, I mean, there's some pretty detailed stuff that is kind of interesting. And so if we got, if we got to the point of policy, you'd obviously be involved. I'm not imagining right now what policies we might develop, other than to make some standard statements that we do support this, we do support that, and in some cases, we are absent those policies. But I think it might take its, its concrete, its most concrete form might, might be budget in late, late summer, where it means something. In addition to the satisfaction of, 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 you know, forward-looking, so.
Yeah, kind of a, a side note, but an interesting point on the, or maybe to me, on the, the idling. I was always curious, whenever I pop in to pick up a packet or that sort of thing, there's always at least one cruiser that, that's on. And I get it, in the winter, I, I can understand that. In the summer was when I first noticed it, and I just thought, I, I get it that seconds count and that sort of thing, but turning the key, if you've got a good battery, like the odds of it not starting are so slim, is, is there some, I was just curious if there was a, a study behind it, or some kind of philosophy behind it that says, no, 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 it makes a whole lot more sense to keep it going, cause otherwise problems happen.
Yeah, like we used to diesel.
Right.
That it was more expensive, it's more wasteful of resources to turn it off and on. I don't know, but I'm sure we have a highly professional, engaged staff, and I'm sure they have answers to those.
Right, yeah.
They probably maybe have never been asked.
I, actually, I always think to ask, and I, I need to, I should just do that.
Can I just say one more on the topic of idling? I think that one of the biggest idling problems that we have is everybody being stuck at the, the stoplight, trying to get onto Harbor Road at Route Seven. And that is happening, as we all know, specifically at two times of the day, and it's directly related to all the people who drive their children to school.
Yeah.
And yet, you know, we have never been able to get traction around the idea of making it easier for kids to walk to school. I mean, we, we do really symbolic things. We have, you know, sort of special days where everybody walks to school, as if this was a special thing. It should be a normal thing, it should be the exception that you drive your kid to school. And, you know, there, people are not using the, the, the school buses for a variety of reasons. And, and I think that we could solve some of our problems in our village if we had places where we could drop children off. When my kids went to CVU, there was, you know, they never wanted to get up for the school bus. So there was the, you know, the, this alternative place where you could catch the bus at the library. I don't know if it's still going on with the, everything else, but, you know, that's, that was really how they ended up getting to school most of the time. It seems like you could do something like that at, maybe at the boat launch, and then get a lot of the people who are coming, who would be coming down Route Seven or down Harbor Road, they could drop their children there, they could catch a bus, a later bus, that would then go to the school. Or that could be a place in nicer weather where children could actually walk or bike to school under some supervision. There are probably plenty of retired people in this town who are early risers who would enjoy doing that and be win-win for everybody. So, and then, you know, maybe there could be another place that is convenient to people who live on the other side of town. But I think that that would, you know, that would make a huge impact in terms of our idling, you know?
I agree, and, and I admit to being more ignorant about that than I should have been, until I saw the, the effects of the construction project, which interrupted this carefully orchestrated, you know, flow of kids. I mean, Kevin can't handle all of them, you know? They can't all go to Kevin's and wait on rides. I mean, I noticed that too, when you go in for coffee, you learn about what, which hours to avoid and which not, you know, when the kids are there and gone, you know? Because then there's parking, but several of us noted what a major change that meant in, in a population, I don't think anybody truly respected, of kids that were coming through, through and being picked up. I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, maybe there's a way to, to ask Carrington House to, to make use of their facility. Maybe the churches could rotate, maybe the museum, I mean.
The museum, that's a great idea, actually, on that end, yeah.
I mean, if, if we are village, we, we act as a village, and, and I've, I've many a time sat there like everybody else, thinking, geez, they've got to go through a, you know, a smoke field of, of car exhaust waiting there at the corner to cross, you know, for a light. I mean, I can't imagine Tracy, how she even gets, finds her way home at night sometimes, I mean, gee. And I think you are stoop, you have an eye for these seemingly small things that are very significant in terms of, of what we want to be as a village.
Well, it just, it sets up a culture of, of walking and getting around and things like that. And then later on, you know, down the road, it, you know, if we can get more people walking as a more ordinary thing and getting around for, for trips like that, that starts to build a constituency for doing things like maybe taking on Route Seven through the village as a class one highway, and then we can really make it, you know, much more the way we want it to be. We could put street trees in and, and, you know, kind of change all that.
I think Route Seven should be approached by crossing Route Seven, thinking about how you cross it, not, not north-south.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think you can do anything about north-south. It's straight, it's inviting, it's, it's packed. I mean, but you can do an awful lot with crossings. And we had that successful Boy Scout effort to put the, to put the warning light in. Now, we have, maybe we should, we should be thinking of something special at the, at the entrance that's going to be re, reconfigured in the new town center, equally so. Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I think, and, and numbers of these which don't, if they do rise to an issue before us, or a select board, or any of us, they don't, they don't have the coinage of town-wide significance and larger issue, addressing a larger issue. They sometimes just, they, they're in some kind of, an idiosyncratic problem, and, and, you know, we say, gee, Lee will help you with that, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, and we had an experience, didn't we, with Bay Road first, when the, when the first planning came through and, and created a second straight shot, you know? If you didn't like Route Seven, you're going to love Bay Road, because that's even open, you know, more open. Remember, it was a straight shot through, through all kinds of properties and all that. So I think these are the kinds of things we have to, we have to seek out as, as understandings and needs and, and combine in a, in a whole set of ideas that might take the shape of, of, of village, might take the shape of safety, might take the shape of, of, you know, energy conservation, but, but do take the shape of Shelburne. And, and we should not, we should make the functions, you know, with the forums work for, for us. You've been very kind, both of you, to hear me.
No, this, I think this is a great discussion, and, and part of what, what we'd been talking about, about just engagement between boards and understanding where people are coming from.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is all good.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've been remiss, I feel, Jason, I have personally. And, and we have all the makings, we have, I have two colleagues who were, who had thorough going involvement in each of them, in various boards. We have, in all likelihood, depending upon a write-in vote, another gentleman who has a longstanding experience in ethics committee, so we have, I mean, everybody there has, has the, has the benefit of, of prior experience in a, in a board or, or a committee. So it's, it won't be anything to, to, I think, ratchet up the amount of coordination and collaboration that, sometimes you just get so wrapped up in your own.
Oh, yeah. Well, and to be fair, there's been a lot going on.
Yes, enough to go every two weeks, much less to go every week, you know?
Cause I, I know the select board has a, has had a very packed schedule with a lot going on, and the planning commission, at least through the town, or through the town plan, like that, there had been weeks that just were, it was a lot of time to go into that. So now that we're at a, getting to that spot, I think the timing is good.
Well, you've been generous in allowing me to.
I, I just wanted to add that I think it was a really strong beginning in the way that you approached the plan and bringing in other committees to be able to work with you and getting a much broader kind of input than we've had in the past. And one of the things that I've noticed particularly, because I seem to end up at a lot of meetings lately, is that there's really a lack of engagement among the people in the town until it becomes an NIMBY thing. And somehow or another, through this process of figuring out where we want to go, it would be really important, I think, at the base, to try to find a way to engage people more. Because you have this project that was the library, that had so much enthusiasm among a certain number of people, but the amount of negative commentary that you get now is terrible, but where were those people when the plans were being discussed? And I think the same thing comes down all the time, and, and the question is, how do you engage people? And I think that's going to be really, really important to any kind of development, because I see projects, for example, down at Artisan Village and across the street from us, it's been going on forever, and there's just endless neighbor conflict. And so somehow or another, as we write new, new regulations, neighborhoods have to be engaged as well, so that we can be able to get through some of this and people understand, people who are, who want to be doing development also understand the process that will make it easier for them to be able to get to the next step.
And, and that was one of the reasons for the Form-Based Code, was to sort of spell it out, you know, like really clear, this is, this is how this is going to integrate, you know? And we, we had the neighbors involved in saying, well, what would you like, you know? How, what would, right now, are you happy with what you have right now? No. Okay, well, but how do we, we need to incentivize these places to redevelop for, you know, the following, you know, just sort of obvious reasons. And so what, what could they be? What, what would you like to see there instead, you know? And, and let's see how well this aligns with what property owners would like, and guess what?
And maybe we have to go to neighborhoods sometimes.
Yeah, there was a better fit.
Instead of having them come to, come to meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't happen, either because of the time that meetings are held, or because people are intimidated by it.
Well, we were successful in, in this case, in getting neighbor, neighbors from, you know, further up, like Juniper Ridge, that, back in those neighborhoods to, to come. to, to come. But, and Martindale, that area. But, but less successful in getting neighbors from the area right, you know, closest to the village. I mean, there are fewer of them, and we sent things to them and invited them. And, you know, people go to Florida and, you know, I mean, stuff happens. So it, you know, that, that didn't go as, as well.
Yeah, and again, this isn't a critique, but I think it's an observation that says somehow or another, early engagement can only help.
Right.
And I, I think the broad engagement that you guys had in the plan was really an essential piece of the way that it went so easily through the.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, it was, it was clearly to, to someone who was sort of outside the immediate, you know, it was clearly a community product. It never struck me, made it a star, or hearing conversations or being, talking with people, that it was not representative of, of, of the community. I mean, I think that was a real achievement and accomplishment. And I don't want to close on a, because I'm, you've been very generous with your time, and I can't thank you enough. But I don't want to close on a negative note. But one of the practical problems we have, that we have to solve, is that we're very reliant on a very few staff persons for a lot of this. Not just staffing, and Dean can, his ears can burn or not, as, you know, but not just staffing the, the boards and commissions, which are substantial tasks of their own. But helping organize and potentially staffing meetings of any kind. That's a practical problem we've got to kind of address at some point. And I've thought about that too, as potentially something that we could employ a, a dedicated cadre of residents, just volunteers, you know, board of visitors kind of thing, where we have a group who are enthusiastic about, you know, X or Y and could help organize, if not, not present charrettes and, and even as formal an activity as that, to relieve the, the burdens on staff. It's a, it's a practical consideration that in our conversation, March 12th, we're going to have to recognize. You can, you can staff just so many initiatives.
Right.
Reasonably. And you folks have a, have a workload of a routine as it is, and so we have that to consider. That's where the strength of committee board and commissions are. You could simply put it in the hands of, of either a CBC or a coalition, I mean, or a joint committee, three from each or something like that. And just ask them, just task them, you know, would you take this on and run them? So it's a consideration, you know.
Yeah, there's some good conversations ahead of us.
You've been wonderful, yeah. I really appreciate it. So stay tuned.
Sure thing.
I'll, I'll be sure to circulate the background piece to you so you have an idea of, you know, what we're going to get going with on March 12th. There won't be any, I don't think there will be any immediate decision-making. It's, it's intended to start, introduce the thing and start, start consideration of it probably through most of the spring and then in our strategic plan. So, thanks.
Good stuff. Well, thank you for.
You've been great, thanks. Good to see you.
Coming and sharing, yeah. Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Dean. I'll take this on if that's okay.
Oh, sure, yep.
So, all right. Do we have any other, any other things around this? There's no need to be here late tonight. Time certainly flies when you're having fun. I didn't realize I got as late as it did.
So, and we're going to be.
Thanks, Jerry.
Meeting on Monday, did we say?
Yes.
Okay, we had scheduled that.
Yeah, we scheduled it. I got it in the calendar. Yeah, and I don't think I have anything pressing inside of this.
Is this the month that you're going to be like this all month?
We should, I'm, I'm gone.
I'm, I'm gone the next meeting, and I think you are.
And I'm gone the next two. I get back on April night. Late. Yeah, I think those are supposed to have four each.
As long as the flu isn't still taking people down.
Right. Because that's, Dick and Stephen are out with the flu today, which is the quorum issue. Yeah, so we'll, we'll meet on Monday and, I guess, just still, still press forward. Did you, Kate, have any other?
No.
Topics or anything?
No, no, I'm just figuring, maybe, I don't know, can send us around for the next.
Yeah, I thought, did I send that? Yeah, I did.
Well, I only, you only got it today, so it would have been hard to send it around, probably. But maybe for, if, if you wanted, I tried to make it as, hopefully, something that, it was just the section of the Route 7 next steps that I was assigned to address. So if, if the board wants to take it up or just have a look at it at the next meeting, if, even if I'm not there, that, it's just like, here's a little bit more information that I've gathered, kind of thing.
Look at that.
So we don't need to say adjourned or anything, right?
I guess we don't.
Party's over?
Let's call it.
Yeah, the party's over.